You're ready. Sir, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Let us pray. God our Father, first of all, we just want to say thank you. I want to thank you, God, first of all, for just waking us up this morning and watching over us and protecting us and give us traveling grace and arriving mercy. Now, God, we pray that every decision that's made on today, God will be with the betterment for of the great city of Lone Oak, Arkansas. God, we pray a special prayer over every elected official here on today. God, help us to put aside every difference that we have. Help us, God, to be what the Bible says or what you say in your word, to be slow to speak but quick to listen. And, God, we always give your name all the praise, all the honor and all the glory. And then, God, we ask you, God, to give each and every person here wisdom to make this great city of Lone Oak a better place for everybody to stay. God, we'll give your name all the praise, all the honor and all the glory that's due when all this is done. It's in Jesus' name we pray, and when all of God's children shout it, amen.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Philip Powell?
Here.
Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Cordell?
Here.
Ms. Bridges?
Here.
Ms. Elmore?
Here.
Mr. Bowles?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Hutton? Mr. Florence? Mr. Butler?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, the pack was assembled and the minutes were gathered and made available last Thursday evening. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the meetings, the regular minutes from last city council? If they have, then I'll take a motion to approve.
Salute.
Seven.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, no public comments this evening. First on the agenda then is a twenty twenty-two executive board report. The floor is yours, ma'am. Thank you. Absolutely. Microphone's on.
Good evening. I'm Callan Horton, a senior at Lone Oak High School, and I am a member of the Lone Oak Twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Executive Committee. The Lone Oak Twenty-two Action Teams have continued meeting monthly and have facilitated citizen participation in a number of events since our last report to city council. Members of the beautification and recreation action teams attended the Paving Their Way Conference and Planted Blood High and Blood last month, sponsored by UAMX. At this conference, we were encouraged to apply for a walk audit through the UCA Request for Assistance Program, which we did on behalf of the city. We are awaiting word as to whether this walk audit has been awarded. If received, this will move the walk audit up to later this fall instead of next spring. The beautification team will also be working on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, to refurbish the planters and rotate seasonal plantings. The committee is also working with students and other community members to paint drainage inlets throughout, through the Drain Smart Program. The next meeting of, the next meeting of this team will be Monday evening, October twenty-eighth, at five thirty P. M. The infrastructure action team met on September twelfth with special guest Ed Swong, attorney with the Bayou Meadow Irrigation District, who informed that team about available government resources for drainage improvements. The infrastructure action team has also been asked by the mayor to assist in evaluating proposals for energy savings at city-owned facilities from many of these firms. The action team will be, will begin meeting with these firms on October twenty-fourth in advance of the city releasing a request for proposals for energy savings. The next infrastructure action committee meeting will be held on October twenty-second. The housing action, action team will be led by Karen Dilwell, led by Karen Dilwell, held a joint with the Chambers Economic Development Committee to focus on how to promote new housing starts, which are essential to growth as outlined in the Chambers Economic Development Strategic Plan. Housing, housing action team members also participated in the zoning commission's Contractors Town Hall on October seventh, which was attended by several citizens, including those in, in the construction and design professions. Another joint meeting of the housing and the Chamber Economic Development Committee is planned. The next jobs and education action team will be held on Tuesday, October twenty-second, at five thirty P. M. at the Lone School District Administration Office. Ms. Amanda Rather will join executive committee member Tiffany Hunter as new co-chair for this team. The downtown support committee meets the second. During the October meeting, the committee made plans to attend Main Street Arkansas Application Conference this coming Wednesday, October sixteenth, in Littlerock. Lone Oak will be represented by Jeanette Boils, Tasha Terry, and Natalie Biles. And the committee will again be sponsoring the Teal Pumpkin, Teal Pumpkin Inclusive Trick or Treat event hosted by Downtown Business on Halloween evening, Thursday, October thirty-first, from four thirty to five thirty. If you want to participate, you may contact Jeanette Boils. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on the agenda, Mr. Mike Brown with the Community Center Report.
Good evening. For the month of September at the Community Center, we had a slight decrease again in our membership, and I kind of attribute that to football seasons going on and the time, time hasn't changed yet. So, once the families get through with football and the time change, we, we should have a, a pretty big increase for, for the next month. Okay, we had a, one of a better months in October, which gives us quite a bit in our, in our operating. And we're still working on some projects, just got to get them wrapped up and tied up before I come to you with some, with some action plans. Some events that we've got going on, on October the thirtieth, we have the health checks and Baptists will be giving flu shots free to the public. They were there probably a couple of weeks ago and I think they did about thirty-five flu shots. Our member of the month is Jonathan Reeves, and he's the guy that's, if you see Jonathan, you'll be amazed. He comes in with a, I think he's got cerebral palsy. He comes in in a walker and he can use every machine that we've got. The mammal van will be in town on the thirteenth. Basketball signups ends on the eighteenth. We're working the schools this week to, to get more signups. I think once football ends, we'll get an influx of kids. We're starting a, well, I'm copying a walking program. It's a Baptist Health Walking Program. We're gonna ride with them through the end of the year and at first of the year, we're gonna adopt most of the rules and start our own walking program. You got pamphlets. If you sign up, you get a T-shirt, a pedometer, some logs, and they actually give prizes at the end of the year. So, long as you, you know, you still got a chance to, to walk a lot, you know, with the, with the walking trail. We've got the track. So, we're gonna try, we're, we're, we got that started and gonna push it hard through December and start our own in January. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
I have a question. On the flu shots and the mammograms and the high blood pressure classes, are there fees for any of that?
They're free.
All of that's free? Okay.
I think you're supposed to bring a driver's, driver's license, right? Or some form of identity.
Yeah, you've got to have, yeah. And if you got insurance, they all, they always ask that, but they'll let you take a shot without the insurance.
So, everyone qualifies for those classes and those shots and mammograms?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it. All right, next is the fire report. Mr. Chief Whittenburg?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, thanks. First thing you got is the fire cop calls. We had twenty-two of those in the last month. Average attendance of five point six four and nine hours and twenty-eight minutes on seeing on those. The next one's for the medical type calls. We had twenty-eight of those. Uh, average attendance was three point seven nine and hour spent on them was nine, hour, five minutes, a couple of fifty calls and ten hours on seeing. Any questions?
Easy. Thank you, Chief. All right, next is the public works report. Mr. Jim Kelly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First off is my monthly report. You notice we were really busy last month. A lot of leaks, a lot of meter changeouts. And that's a pretty standard report. Still a low water loss. Seventeen point five percent water loss this month. I do have an item for action, and that is a project we budgeted through my normal operating budget, and it's for sandblasting and painting at the water treatment plant. Low bid was from Eagle Sand Blasting and Painting Incorporated, and that was a total amount of sixty-nine thousand five hundred. That'll be to sandblast all three of my filters at the treatment plant and sandblast a nineteen sixty basin that I have there and then refuel it off, all services. Also, the catwalk that was built to be painted as well.
So, entertain a motion to approve the bid?
So, move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
That's all I got.
Any questions?
I entertain any questions.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Mr. Patrick Reagan with the Streets Department. Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had on October the tenth, twenty nineteen, we opened the bids up for the sidewalk project. Uh, we had three bids, and the lowest bid was for Harris Construction Management of three hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and two cents. And we come to date to see if we can get that approved.
Make a motion that we go with Harris Construction for three hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and two cents for sidewalk construction for the city.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion items?
Can you refresh this generally about what these routes are that are in this package?
What the routes are?
What the route of the, yeah, this particular sidewalk.
Not, not without giving you a graphical depiction. I can't, to my head, the first phase, this is basically East Palm, all the way. Down west, well, down West Palm, Academy, Lincoln, Lincoln Streets.
That's in this package?
Well, you don't have a map in the package. We just.
Yeah, I just mean that's what's in this bid.
That's correct. It's the first phase.
I have a question. Uh, on the bid, numbers one and two, you have a copy of that? Cleaning, S. T. A., and grubbing? Could you tell me what that is?
Uh, clearing, that's to, uh, clearing trees and, uh, you think it might be in the way of the path of the sidewalk to put those two out?
Oh, okay.
I was just curious. It had a, the prices that they charge per unit on that was quite different.
That was recognized as open as well. I spoke with the contractors. He's aware of the flow outs and, and, uh, still accepts the contractors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Need a motion to accept the bid? Motion made.
I think I made a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion items? I would take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Reagan.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the report is Captain Stephen Holt, Police Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, the first page, you'll see the month activity for September. We made a total of six thousand, three hundred thirty dollars with immigration and parole. Uh, page two, you'll see the, uh, the citations issued for each ward.
I got a question.
All right, before Stephen leaves, while we're on the slide, subject of Police Department, I want to make an announcement. The new chief of police is gonna be Mr. Matthew Edwards. He's currently at the Police National Academy. Matt, you guys know he's a hometown boy. He's got approximately nineteen years in law enforcement. And he will start January the sixth.
Congratulations on your decision in hiring him, Mayor. So, I think it's a nice hire.
This is a great, I think it's a great decision for the city. All right, thank you, Stephen. All right, next report is Parks and Mosquito, Mr. Rordon Lewis.
I was talking to mosquito. Um, we're finished spraying. We stopped, stopped Thursday, last Thursday night. Now, on to the ballpark. I'd like to start by saying that the ballpark brings out more people to our city between the months of March through July. And it does, has a great impact on, on the city. That being said, we're at a point, we're gonna have to do something with the concession stand and bathrooms that's connected to them. We've, uh, it's gonna take around two hundred fifty thousand dollars or more just to repair what we've got there. And, and to get them up to code. So, after consulting with the mayor and others, we put a committee together and discussed our options. We decided to try to build a, a new one. We advertised for architects, and we decided to go along with Allison and Partners. Then we put out, we worked with them, the committee did, come up with a design and that we all liked, and we put it out to bid. We had ten bidders that bid on this, which was a great show. And the lowest bid came up to six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And that was Key Builders Incorporated. The recommendation of the committee is to build a new one with the approval from y'all. We've got a couple of slides here to show you of the old restroom right now. That's, the one on the left is an men's restroom. Uh, that's the corner. You see the crack is the whole northeast wall and the east wall. The fall, and then the women's restroom, there's a quarter inch gap that you can see from outside the end or inside out. That's cracking. On the next slide, uh, that's the roof, and then that, the, on the inside, the, on the right side is where it's leaking inside the concession stand right now. I have probably twenty more of other photos of some of the slides. It's, this building is thirty-five years old. We've got great facilities out there, the fields. We've got two other restrooms out there, but the way our fields are made, we have to have them in them locations, and we need one right there. Now, this new building, uh, the next slide, please, is, this is what it's gonna look like. That is the, the south side of it. Um, the two orange, on the west side here, where the two orange signs are, that's gonna be kind of, that's not where they're gonna be. That's to let everybody know where the, the tournament brackets, information out, and there's stuff like that. It's gonna have another window on the other, on the north side. I believe there's another slide for the north side, isn't there? No.
No, that's the only.
Okay. Well, the other side's gonna look a lot like this, this south side. It's gonna have a, a meeting room in between the concession and the restrooms that we can host our registrations. We can host our state tournaments. We get state tournaments every year. We have for the last fifteen years. And has a lot to do, I'm assistant state commissioner, but the new state commissioner we got this year has done, uh, told us that we're guaranteed for his term, which is the next two years, to get another state tournaments. But we've got to upgrade our facilities, and I'm just asking to do that tonight.
Did they give you approximate time or?
April first, if we, if we can start now. This is turnkey. They're gonna come and tear this other down and start building the new one. And April, they're supposed to have an April first deadline on it. The season starts April the fifth, I believe, or sixth, something like that.
And also worth this money from the, too.
We got, this year, we'll probably pay around two hundred fifty thousand at the end of this year, and then at, uh, at that point, that leaves us around four hundred nineteen thousand to pay. We can, uh, we'll put it out to bid to the banks to borrow it and pay over five years. And we can do it monthly, quarterly, bi- annually or annually, uh, payments, the payments, because my money comes in monthly, uh, all through the year. We don't, we don't get it all at once.
Rordon and I talked and, 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 uh, looked at some estimating numbers, but it, it should work fine. In fact, we should be able to pay it off before that five-year period. But the thought is to, to set it up with quarterly payments over that five-year period. And each January, near the end of January, when the year kind of washes out and we see where we are, we very likely should have some, some extra money that, that we can go ahead and, and knock those principal balances down at that time. So, anything can happen, but our, our income's been real steady and it's been a moderate growth, and it should, uh, you know, we could possibly pay the thing off in three years, but, but I think it's safer to use the five-year structure and, and, uh, evaluate where we are at the end of each year as to what we pay above that.
The builders say, and then Allison Partners, Ms. Katie said that every year we wait, it's gonna go up ten to fifteen percent.
And we've seen that. I mean, we've been, we've been talking about this for.
Eight or ten years.
Yeah. We started at three something, and here we are.
Yeah. And it's steadily going up ten to fifteen percent each year.
I'll take a motion to entertain the bid.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion to accept a bid for whatever price that was listed.
Six hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Six hundred and sixty-nine. Second it.
All right, bid's been made and seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I have a question. The four possible deductions to the base bid.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something you're considering doing or?
Well, they put that in. One of them was to take, one of them, I think, was twenty-one thousand. I don't have that with me, and I'm sorry. I didn't bring it with me.
Well, like, uh, demolition of the existing building, ninety-five sixty-seven.
How much?
Nine thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars.
And, and honestly, um, we couldn't do it no cheaper time. We rented all the stuff to do that, and so, they put that in there just in case we, we thought we could do it.
Okay, so that's how much they're charging?
That's how much they're charging. That's, that's input the price of six hundred sixty-nine thousand though. That's our.
And this bridges, if I could add, that, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty low price for that demolition and removal.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it is.
Um, this particular, um, contractor is also, if any of you guys have been out, uh, to the AWA building north of town, he's the same one that did it, and, uh, we're, you know, that organization's very happy with the end product.
Okay, so you're not actually considering that was just optional if you wanted.
That was options that the committee thought about. Uh, we thought about, uh, but with the timeframe we've got, uh, we've got to get started on this quick, so we need to probably leave all four of them options in there, because the other, there was, um, a couple of other small ones. Uh, one of them was, one was insulating walls.
Yeah.
And the one was the flooring. Is that right?
Yeah, and there was one about kitchen tables and shelving.
The, the tables and shelving, uh, that's stainless steel, so that'd be there forever. Um, or we could build them out of wood cheaper, you know, I think with stainless steel, it's a lot more.
Right. Okay, I was just curious how that played into it. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, then we shall take it to a vote. All in favor of accepting the bid, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We've got one more item, uh, Mr. Rordon. It's the Allison and Partners invoice.
We do have Allison Partners. I don't have a copy of that. Do you have it, Jim? I guess y'all got it in your package.
Yeah, the invoice is for eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand, forty-five and fifty-seven cents, which covers, uh, all of their project schematic design work up until this point.
Up to this point, yes. Make a motion to go ahead and pay that.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, moving to old business, is, uh, an ordinance seven fifty-two. Uh, this ordinance is to modify the definition of daycare family home from eight to ten children to eight to sixteen children, which will also align our ordinance with our Unified Development Code. We had a public hearing earlier before we started city council. Nobody showed up and had any, uh, discussion items for, uh, the modification. So, I will take a motion to put ordinance seven fifty-two on the floor.
Can I ask a question first, sure, at some point? I just had a question, and, and it seems like we're just doing this on a lot of our ordinances with the emergency clauses. And I'm, I, I struggle trying to figure out what the sense of urgency is with this at the moment. And I, and, and I guess just what's the precedent of doing them and then always doing them? I mean, if it's not a big deal, it's not a big deal.
If everything's an emergency, nothing's an emergency.
Nothing's an emergency. It just, I, I'm just curious.
Sure. Um, it has been the practice and procedure of Lone Oak to, to do a lot of things by emergency clause. I mean, it does help things to move quicker. Other cities, um, the, another city that I represent doesn't necessarily do it that way. They actually wait and read it over three different meetings. And, you know, it's kind of the go-hoo-lot some three bears, which one's too fast, which one's too, too slow at times. And I think for ours, uh, with this one in particular, why this one contained an emergency clause is that there is a daycare, I mean, you, you should look at it per project and maybe not, and we don't do emergency clauses on everyone, even though we do do a lot.
I, I know we don't do them all the time, but it seems frequently.
Sure. I think this one in particular, uh, there was a home that maybe, that was wanting to expand because of some, um, because of just whatever reason, there, there was more of a demand for, uh, daycare, um, homes in Lone Oak. And, uh, there was an issue with teachers needing ca- care for their kids as, as school started and all that. So, this one, I think we had an emergency and that we needed it to be passed quicker rather than, than later on that. And I think it is something that we should consider, uh, on a ordinance by ordinance basis as to whether it's appropriate. But to be honest, a lot of times we're approached with something and we make, need to make a decision quickly. And I don't think we've done anything improper by doing a lot of emergency ones, but I, I think we're just trying to run quicker than, rather than slow things down. And I don't think that's all that unusual. It's just different cities will take a longer timeframe than others.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to put ordinance seven fifty-two on the floor.
Ordinance number seven fifty-two, an ordinance modifying the Unified Development Code for Definition of Daycare Family Home, Declaring an Emergency and for Other Purposes. Whereas cities of the first and second class and incorporated communities have the power under Arkansas law to adopt and enforce plans for the coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the municipality and its environs. And whereas the Lone Oak Planning Commission adopted a Unified Development Code on August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, after holding a duly authorized public hearing on August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, and the Unified Development Code was approved by the city council. And whereas ordinance number seven hundred and thirteen revised the definition of daycare family home in the Unified Development Code in a manner that reduced the number of children who could be cared for in the home to eight to ten children from more than one family and cared for in a caregiver's own family home or in some other suitable family type residence. And whereas the city council wishes to revise again the definition of daycare family home to allow for the number of children originally allowed in Unified Development Code. The definition of daycare family home shall be revised as follows. Daycare family home, a situation, arrangement, or agreement by which one or more persons care for eight to sixteen children from one, more than one family and are cared for in a caregiver's own family home or in some other suitable family type residence. from one, more than one family and are cared for in a caregiver's own family home or in some other suitable family type residence. Whereas after holding a duly authorized public hearing on October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the revision to the definition of a daycare family home in Unified Development Code was approved by the City Council. And whereas copies of the revised Unified Development Code were ordered and were filed in the Office of the City Clerk of the City of Lone Oak for inspection and view by the public prior to the passage of this amendment to the code. And whereas the city forthwith gave notice to the public by publication in a newspaper with general circulation within the city, stating that copies of the revised code are and have been open to public inspection at the Office of the City Clerk prior to the passage of the revised code adopted by reference herein. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lone Oak, Arkansas. Number one, that the Unified Development Code passed on August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen shall be revised to allow for the definition of daycare family home to be revised as set forth above. Number two, that the City Council, having found that the economic development of the city is being hampered by the delay in adoption of this code, an emergency is hereby found to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and adoption.
Motion to accept the first reading?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to accept the first reading, is there any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to suspend the rules, read title only, second and third reading.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the second and third reading title only.
Ordinance number seven fifty-two, an ordinance modifying the Unified Development Code Definition of Daycare Family Home, Declaring an Emergency and for Other Purposes.
I'll take a motion to accept the second and third reading title only.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to accept the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the emergency clause, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Alright, you guys know we got a new Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, and we're currently at five members, and I need, uh, to fulfill a seven-member team, so I'm nominating Mr. Bill Cooley and Mr. Mike Jones. And I'm requesting the appointment by the City Council. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the nominations.
Motion to accept Mr. Cooley and Mr. Jones, members of the planning.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Alright, next is the AT&T Monopole Lease. Alright, it's been, it's been a few months since we actually got proposed, uh, with Integra, Greg Stacks from Integra Site. Thanks to City Council, we were able to hire a professional consultant that does this full-time, and uh, he did a fantastic job for the city and was able to negotiate everything, uh, he asked for in the city's favor. I gave the City Council an executive summary, um, so what I'm asking is to enter into a lease with AT&T, uh, so that they can build a monopole behind the museum, uh, for twenty-five-year contract, at twelve hundred dollars a month. Uh, he actually, there's a five thousand dollar cost incurred for the consultant, and he actually negotiated half of that salary. So AT&T will also pay half of his, his cost. And we, he also negotiated, uh, uh, an annual inflation rate as well as co-locator fees. So anybody that AT&T puts on the tower, we will also incur a thousand dollars additional per month cost. That's basically the summary, uh, that you guys can't see, it's in the executive summaries there. So I'll take a motion to accept the contract.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the contract for AT&T.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion items?
Thank you for bulldogging this thing, that's, looks a lot more fair.
I would agree with that, absolutely, and I'm very thankful that he came well recommended by the Municipal League, so he did a good job. Alright, uh, motion's been made and seconded, there are no discussion items, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, moving on to new business, uh, we need to certify the twenty-twenty millage collection. You guys have been given a sheet, and, and I'm just gonna read it real quick, it's about a paragraph. You guys have been given a copy of the Property Tax Millage Breakdown, it was certified by Lone Oak City Council in like, in October two thousand and nineteen for two thousand and eighteen collections. The City of Lone Oak has, uh, for the past several years, collected a five-point-four mills. By statute, the city is allowed to collect up to five mills to be used toward the General Revenue Fund without a vote of the people. The City of Lone Oak is currently collecting the maximum amount, the remaining point-four mills collected goes to the local fireman's pension fund. By statute, we could collect up to one mill for police and fire pension, but this must be put on a ballot and approved by a vote of the people. And I suggest we may take a motion to, uh, keep the status quo, uh, and not make any changes. I'll open the floor, Mr. Philip Howey, you're welcome to make any.
Well, it's, you know, we've been at this rate for quite some time and given where we are, I would think we want a special election to increase the millage at this point in time, but that's certainly up to the council. At some point, you know, we are gonna have some issues at some point with the police retirement fund, it's, it's coming. And, and we may wanna consider something at some point in the future, but I think for this point in time, it, I agree with Mayor, it should be left as is.
So I'll take a motion to keep, uh, the millage's collection rate at its current, five-point-four.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion items on it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We, uh, were asked to, the city to vacate an alley, I don't have the address on me, uh, but to do this, we have to set up a public hearing. And so through resolution, it's Block sixteen, Dismu addition, actually. Um, and so we have to propose a resolution to set a public hearing, to hear the petition to vacate the alley on Block sixteen. So I will entertain a motion to put Resolution ten dash one dash two thousand and nineteen on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to put Resolution ten dash one dash two nineteen on the floor.
Second.
Uh, Resolution ten dash one dash two thousand and nineteen, a resolution to set a day for a public hearing on a petition to vacate an alley, whereas Cleo Miller, Dorothy Miller, Matthew Boils, Carol Boils, and Lakeview Loan and Servicing LLC did on the ninth day of October two thousand and nineteen, filed with the City of Lone Oak, a petition to vacate the east half of the alley which runs east and west through Block sixteen of Dismu's addition to the town of Lone Oak, Lone Oak County, Arkansas. And whereas pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated Section fourteen dash three oh one dash three oh two, the City Council of the City of Lone Oak Ark- Lone Oak, Arkansas is, is to set a day for hearing of said petition. Now therefore be it resolved that a hearing will be held at five forty-five P M. on the twelfth day of November two thousand and nineteen at the City of Lone Oak Administration Building located at one oh seven West Second Street, Lone Oak, Arkansas, to hear the petition of Cleo Miller, Dorothy Miller, Matthew Boils, Carol Boils, and Lakeview Loan and Servicing LLC, praying that the above referenced portion of the alley be vacated pursuant to that council action.
Alright, I'll take a motion to accept the rest reading and adopt Resolution ten dash one dash two thousand and nineteen.
So move.
Motion's made, and do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, Resolution carries. Alright. Last item on the agenda, uh, is a Dr. Holmes building update. So, you guys know, uh, see, we was get to Dr. Holmes' building, and, uh, it's got some, it's got some issues with it, and, uh, we're attempting to sell it. Uh, we currently have, uh, two options at this point, we've got an offer that's been made. Uh, we can open, uh, the cell, up to another still bid process, uh, and, and, uh, accept that offer along with anybody else, else's offer that comes through. Or we can make a decision as a City Council to relist the property, um, with RPM, Commercial Development Real Estate Company. And their charge would be eight percent commission, and they've already recommended that we list the property at, uh, at fifty thousand dollars if we do that. So, I'll open up the table to discussion.
Do, can we disclose what the bid amount, or the offer amount has been?
It's all public.
Uh, I, I, I don't know, I just, I feel like we, we've kept on it, we've kept on it for so long, I think it's time for us to take it action. We've got an able and willing buyer.
So the bid is what?
How much is the bid?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand cash.
Ten thousand cash.
My concern is that building has sat there for so long. The longer it sits there, the more repercussions we're gonna have on, uh, potential buyer at all. We've got to remember it's got lead-based paint, it has asbestos, and we know the roof is going to have to completely be repaired. So it's a health hazard, and you don't get a lot of investors when you're dealing with that. You've got to deal with abatement companies, and those, um, assessments were made months ago. So my thought is, the longer we keep it sitting there, the worse it's going to get, and we, my suggestion would be, we probably need to move and take a good cash offer on that building.
I agree.
I do too.
I make a motion then that we sell for the offer that's been presented?
Well, the way this should work is we'll open it up to a still bid, I think it's a third, where'd Regina go? She left, I think it's fifteen or thirty days, I can't remember exactly what the listing has to go, uh, in the newspaper for. But it's a definite amount of time, and so that's what we'd be doing, is making a motion to, uh, list the house for, uh, open offers. Still offers. Somebody like to make a motion?
So move, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, list the property up for closed bids, any other discussion on it? Alright, we'll take it to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's good. Alright, I'll take a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any question on bills? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, I got a couple of announcements, uh, I'll be brief, we're only at about forty-five minutes, which has been fairly quick, and we got a lot of business done tonight, so I appreciate, thank you, council. Give you an update on where we are with energy, we had a meeting with the Arkansas Public Service Commission on Friday, and, uh, the representative from the APSC is on vacation, but he'll be back next week, but, uh, I did get a report by telephone that, uh, things are definitely looking good in our favor. Um, I should be getting some type of objective report on how Energy Planes to attenuate, uh, some of the, the lack of focus maybe, uh, that we've been seeing here. So, uh, they did recommend that, uh, you continue to file claims, use the, the text app to continue reporting power outages if you guys are having them, keep giving Energy feedback, but, um, I think we're doing the right thing and we're starting to get some attention, and, uh, hopefully we'll start seeing a little more focus being put here on our energy, uh, grid. Okay? Um, October the twenty-eighth, um, I'm gonna work, host a working session. As Ms. Horton spoke about, we've been discussing, uh, energy efficiency plans with, uh, three different companies so far that have, uh, approached the city, one of which you've already heard from, uh, in a prior City Council, and we've been learning what this process is like, and I'd like to take an opportunity to host a working session to educate the City Council on what it's gonna take, what these agreements look like, um, and what this cost savings could actually be for the city if we were to enter into an energy agreement. And so, I've been organizing two different alternative dates, and one already fell out, so at this point, I'm stuck with October the twenty-eighth from five o'clock to seven, and my goal is to have all three, um, of the clients come in and essentially educate the City Council on what these, what these contracts look like, alright? It'll be kind of a shotgun, uh, interview style, they come in and get thirty minutes apiece, uh, if all three of them are here. If there's only two, then we'll get, uh, a little bit more time, maybe time for Q and A. Um, and then after that, what I'd like to do is, uh, present information proposing RFQ. As, as we, uh, look at moving forward on being smart with our energy consumption practices, and any type of, uh, solar that we could, uh, be in addition to offsetting our energy costs. October twenty-eighth, that's five o'clock. Alright, if you would, I'll make one more announcement, too, just for the record, uh, there's been, uh, Halloween, is there any discussion on Halloween being on any different day than when it currently is? I'll leave that up to the City Council, if not, then just expect Halloween to be exercised on its traditional holiday. We're not gonna make an alternate, if you will pass these out for me. There's a City Handbook, I wanna give a big, huge, humongous thank you to Ms. Alice Bridges. Um, sorry, I didn't make you one, pass this on, there's one extra, you're welcome to have it, but, um, the City Handbook has been in the works ever since February. We finally got a really nice final last copy, and my hope is to vote, uh, for the approval in November. For the process, I need you guys to read it, look it over, uh, and if you have any issues with it in terms of context or grammar, please bring those to me, um, before next City Council, so we can make changes or discuss them. Also, um, Ms. Deborah Moore brought us, uh, an invite to hear Dr. David Swain speak in Cabot. Would you let, will we read this, or are you gonna give a quick presentation about?
Absolutely, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I know everyone in this room do not realize this, how important agriculture, hydroponics, and whatever is to Lone Oak County. But in addition to that, if you think about duck hunting, and other types of hunts that involve birds. Uh, that's a key factor for economics in Lone Oak County also. So, your library board decided to bring in a professional speaker. Um, he's a native of Lone Oak County, cabinet in particular, he attended U of A, he's, you know, home ground here, went to vet school in Missouri, graduated University of Georgia, he spent his whole career conducting research to solve problems, specifically disease problems and bird, uh, espec- especially the bird flu. So he travels all over the world, he collects carcasses, he brings them back to the laboratory, uh, at the Southeast, uh, Political Research, uh, in Athens, Georgia, which is the U.S. Department of Agriculture's high bio-entainment laboratory for research. So, uh, he is an international, uh, expert on bird diseases, and he's published over ten books about this, so this is a, a wonderful opportunity for you to come out and receive a little more education about bird diseases, bird flu in particular. Um, reception starts at five thirty, everyone's invited to come, his lecture starts at six thirty on Thursday night, and then he will have a question and answer session, it'll, it'll only last about an hour of lecture and question and answers.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, is there any, are there any other announcements from the public or from the City Council? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Alright, motion's made, any objection? Thank you. Thank you.